Contract bus services, is it the same thing?
Contract.
Contract bus services, what was that?
Yeah, there was.
That's the one?
That was the one. The budget line.
And then the other one was additional.
Correct. Okay, then the bottom half, the bottom of the pages were the increased revenues.
Now, the white section of these potential revenues, these are not affected here, right?
No, none of the additional revenues are affected.
Um. You want to go through the white section, see if there's anything there?
Sure.
I can find the right page. Oh, you know, I've been through the revenue piece, so what are you talking about?
The white section, this one.
Yeah.
Top, top. That was the original.
Original.
Some of them, some of them.
Some of them you what?
Some of them was already moved down there.
Okay.
I think we, I think we cut it off and highlighted it.
So some of these may or may not have been done yet.
I think they are.
I think everything that's been done has been highlighted.
Everything that's been moved down to the bottom and highlighted.
Okay, so these are all still possibilities. Conference attendants?
I just, you know, we, we reduced it already, not knowing where we're going in regards to Race to the Top and all the new ABBI requirements. At least hold off for another year and see where we, see where we go with that.
Clerical? It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. Twenty-two thousand. That's two positions, right?
And that includes benefits too.
Yeah.
I want to take a look at that.
So that, that's not the point five clerical that we talked about earlier?
No.
Actually, you know, we have a look at that, that's between Steve also, something seems odd, seems odd, but.
Yeah, it's my common intention.
But it may not be because of the, their, their senior staff, so we probably use senior staff dollars there, but if we're going to reduce there, there would be lower staff based on seniority, so we wouldn't realize that savings.
Could you get us a new number?
Sure. Check those.
Five department chairs. We've looked at that before, I think that's, I think that's valid. It's administrative, it's one of these administrative overhead costs that we need, that we're big encouragers to look at.
Yeah, that would reduce, that would reduce two of the department chairs and one of the associates that we added, we added this year. The associates seem to be, the associates seem to be helping greatly with the movement of Race to the Top and Common Core, yeah, major levels, that's where the associates are.
So the associates were an attempt to expand our coverage in Victoria, less than dollar.
Correct.
Yeah, but how's this, how's this structured now?
The association, the association helped us with that this year by taking a lower agreement to that one year, lower stipend to allow us to do that.
Right, so now this is adding back the full cost to it?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd like to take, I think I'd like to take that one. May I be going to, are we willing to look at that arrangement as last year as well of those positions in that board? Would you mind that? Athletic travel, I think, I think where we are with the numbers and what we heard from different polls and stuff, I think if we stick to the, stick to the administrative overhead costs, looking at that, I think we're going to be about the right range and meet the, the most part of the programs, the activities alone, does that strategy sound about right to everyone?
Sounds right. And we're going to look at those, we're going to continue to look at those, those costs and see what else we can do to, to show those up as we move into future years.
So keep athletic travel, keep physical activities, keep musical, various BOSI services, what's that?
We would have, we'd have to go, ultimately go back and look at some of the, some of the curriculum programs, and that may, in a, a year from now, they may, they may be able to be eliminated again. Much of what we include here is tied to Race to the Top, Common Core work, and that would be really the only area we would be able to get to, those, those downer amounts.
So that means that we would do more of the work on Common Core instead of ourselves?
Yeah, or we would, or we would reduce, for example, our ability to have, have, be directed by some of their, their staff development, our ability to buy technology, for example, we have to belong, we have to belong to one of those coasters to, that creates and provides that development in order to purchase our technology equipment through BOSI's, so that would eliminate that ability to purchase through BOSI's and get aid on that, on those purchases.
Yeah, in addition, we would be losing the BOSI's aid in 2013, 14.
So how is that different from the next one, reduce technology funding level of BOSI services, that sounds like the equipment line.
That is, that would be the equipment, equipment line, they would actually go together. If you reduce, if you reduce the top one, then the bottom one has to go away also.
So the first one, BOSI services is training, Race to the Top.
Training, training, and the way they bundle those together is one of those packages that we use for one from each school, in order for us to purchase equipment, purchase this equipment through BOSI's, we would have, we have to belong to those coasters.
So I'm on the second item, is the actual purchase or lease agreement?
Correct. And both of, both of those are aid items through BOSI's.
So what do school districts do that, that don't do this through BOSI's, they?
The vast majority of the individuals belong and buy through BOSI's.
Because it's more cost effective?
Cost effective and effective, getting our BOSI's aid on every piece of that, every piece of that technology equipment that you purchase.
So it's all or nothing?
And we, and again, we, we continue, we continue to look at that, continue to, to pare back BOSI's on a annual basis, and, but to a certain degree, we've, we've looked at attempting to buy, if you will, from BOSI's because of the, because of the, as long as it's cost effective.
The BOSI's occupational education line had been increased by about ten percent or so?
Correct, that's due to an increase in the number of kids that are there, we're always there, we're billing bill from a year behind.
If we have, if we have that many more kids going there, that means there's less kids here, why don't we not have smaller classroom sizes?
Well, I think that that, you know, that would be, that would be attributed to, at least to that class size, to some of the lower class sizes in some of those classes, and the fact that there are now, we've traditionally been rented about eighty or eighty-one kids in career tech programs, last year and the year before, that dropped off considerably to about sixty-five, so where we're at now today is back up to eighty students, which has been traditionally, at least over the last ten or twelve years, it's been pretty steady, stayed, stayed in the same piece, we just had a, we had, actually we had a decrease in the number of students attending, and now we're back to where we were before, so it's, it's really just let it off. We probably should have reduced, or I shouldn't say that, we, we didn't change the number of classes, and we probably filled more of those classes in the last two years, two years previous to this year, and this year, those numbers are probably back to where they were three years ago. But that's not to say that, that's not to say because of the decline in enrollment that some of those numbers will be decreasing and, and we will be cutting back, being reminded we reduced already in one, one draft, we reduced one junior high school teacher, and there's, there's another one that's out there on that list, so.
What would the savings be if we were to require our tech ed students to take their core classes here, rather than, rather than taking English and math and so on with BOSI's?
We take, we, we actually have them take their core classes here, they get additional credit, for example, they, they take their, the seniors take their, their English here and they get their, they get additional credit for what they're taking there.
So they're taking their core in both?
Correct, well, they're taking, they're taking English and, they're taking English, English and English, or they can get credit, and it comes to the school district as to whether or not, how we grant that, but we have, for example, we have a, a great delta of essentials of writing, they take that essentials of writing course here, any CTE essentials of writing class could fit into the schedule.
So would we be realizing savings if we, if we brought those students back to take their core classes here, instead of splitting it up?
No, actually, actually, if, we wouldn't realize, there wouldn't be any, any realized savings, as far as reductions, if you went the other way, if you, if you allowed all those students at, at Career Tech to take all of their credits in English and math at, at the Career Tech Center, then we could reduce staff here, because they would be taking it all with their Career Tech program. If we bring them back, if we bring them back and have them, we have to do it here, we need staff to teach that, so if we allow them to, to take, take that and earn, earn their credit, which they're doing, and we count that as their senior program, then that would reduce staff here.
That's a, that's a big line, I'd like to clarify when you're interested in.
And we're going to continue to analyze it, hopefully as, as we go forward in the coming weeks more.
What percentage of our junior, senior classes does Tech Ed represent?
Well, represents eighty, eighty students, so if you, if you split that out in forty, it's.
One hundred and forty-five, one hundred and forty, ten or twelve, forty for class.
So almost thirty, almost thirty percent of our classes?
Total, yeah, total, total eighty juniors and seniors.
And we pay BOSI for every student who enrolls in the program?
Correct, correct, and then rate it on that.
What do we, what do we, what's a student cost in that?
About seven thousand dollars, and then rate it on, rate it on top of that for the next, in the coming year. It's the seventy, seventy-five percent.
I had, that's how many kids, forty or eighty?
Eighty, eighty, I believe the average right now is eighty, eighty-one.
I don't, any more thoughts about the BOSI? I think that's where we're at.
Well, I think, I think these two items really have to do with Tech Ed, they had to do with.
Oh yeah, that's one.
Correct.
I was wanting to know.
Correct, that's, oh, the, the services. And actually, I believe, I'm not mistaken, this went down from, about two hundred thousand dollars from last year to this year, it was in the original budget.
Is that where up, is that where up to six seventy-five?
So the structural is up one hundred and twenty-five dollars or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, remember, BOSI's, BOSI's is scheduled.
BOSI's is?
Um, BOSI's is throughout the budget, I mean, you, you think about every, every area.
Yeah, last year, our current service level is two point one million, almost two point two million dollars, and you're going to see this on the seventeenth, our BOSI service commitment is for one point eight five million.
This is one of the concerns I have, is we just kind of get the bill for BOSI, and that, nothing's ever done about it, I mean, maybe that structure, they can just keep raising the rates and keep paying the bill. Yeah, we're doing our best over here to try and watch our costs, yet.
Again, I think they, ultimately, I think they're, they're trying to do it too, so that we, so that people aren't pulling out necessarily, pulling out of all of those, those coasters, everything that we did this year to get, to try to reduce it, is we pulled back on a lot of those areas, and a lot of those areas also are tied to, tied to actual enrollment, school enrollment, so if you're, our, what they call our WADA, which is the number of kids actually that we have in the district, some of those services are based on that, our technology services, our data services, all those kinds of things that we provide, are all based on the number of kids total in the district.
Has any recap, item that BOSI does gone down in cost?
Um, I would doubt it, because again, their, their, their costs are based on, they're on costs, as far as staffing and assembly and the heck of it, between the number of people on the programs.
But they're monopoly, it's wrong, pricing.
Yeah, but again, we, we do, you know, that Lisa talks about shopping around, there wasn't at the time that we didn't do a lot with BOSI's, and we just bought off of state contract and got little or no aid, we now look at the best deal, if we can get the best deal outside of BOSI's for a product or for a service, then we go outside and do it, we don't book with BOSI's.
Yeah.
We try to make sure, we try to make sure that at least the prices are in line, and then look at if they're in line or equivalent, that we're going to get seventy-nine percent of aid in most, in most cases.
That's the problem, the only reason is it's a subsidized model.
Correct. Correct.
If it wasn't subsidized, we'd probably be going with BOSI's.
Right, right, correct, right.
Okay, um, could you, could you pull us together just a summary of, kind of like we have these line items here, all these pages, just one of these, where you do year-to-year actual budget, and whole page like that that does a summary of all BOSI's stuff?
Do we do that?
You know, because it's sprinkled throughout, it's hard to get a clean folder, spend it over there and everything else.
Right now?
Oh, okay. That's right, no, we'll give you, and also, so you'll see, and probably look it up in the summer, we posted about it at the beginning of the week, is to take, we haven't done it, so someone will take the time to do it, is the BOSI service agreement for next year will be adopted in April, it's all, all the detail, everything that ties right there.
Wouldn't be done often.
We don't get any, we don't get any of those services.
We don't do any, nothing?
We don't get anything, we don't get, we don't get over them.
Do we have any elaboration in the book?
No, no, they produce, they produce prices, and it's, and it's different, and it's different by BOSI's based on what their actual cost is.
Is that the practice?
And we ultimately have to buy, buy services from BOSI's within, that we belong to, if it's our region, we have to buy services through Erie Two, some of our, some of our services come from Erie One, because that's the REC, the Regional Information Center, that provides all of our uploading to the state, all of our assessment, scoring, and all those kinds of things come out of the REC, so that's Erie One, which is Regional Information Center, everything else has to come out of Erie Two.
Do we have to go through Erie? So there's Chicago One?
No, we can't, we have to go through Erie Two, BOSI's, that's our, and, and those costs that they, they do, and they vary from BOSI's, BOSI's based on, you know, their staffing, the age of their staffing, the superiority of their staffing, and all those kinds of things, so, you know, in some areas you may pay a little bit more than Erie One, and in, in Erie Two, and the other vice versa, depending on the kinds of staff they have in those programs.
So it sounds like we're kind of stuck with the buying agreement?
At this point, we'll continue to, we'll continue to take a look at it, we do every year, and as Lisa said, we're down, we're down this year.
All right, so talk about Kenny Garret, I think I said you know, what about this waiver system, phys ed?
Yeah, it's only not a waiver, it's the ability, we have the ability to count athletics, the problem is you still have to have the classes in place, because it can only count during this, during the time that the athlete is in season, so when the athletics season ends at the end of October, you have to be in class, so you still have to have all the classes available in order for all those kids to go back to the classes, and you have to track, you have to track them, if they're not in, if they don't show up at a practice, you have to make sure they get to, make up phys ed class, we've looked, we looked at that early on when we began semesters, and it just, it didn't, it didn't allow us any, any savings at all, because you have to have all the classes still available, because the seasons don't match our semesters, and the kids vary from season to season.
Can you look to any other districts and see if they're doing like that?
I haven't found anybody, we took a look at, at anybody that's doing it, other than just doing it as a supplemental phys ed, some of those, there may be a couple giving supplemental phys ed credit, but nothing that's the core requirement.
What's involved in modifying, increasing phys ed class sizes rather than canceling?
Um, again, we, we know, we continue to, continue to look at that, and as sections decrease, that's, that's one of the things that we talked about, for example, in GLP, that, that special ed teacher will be reduced based on the number of sections that she teaches, but certainly you have a certain number of kids that you want in, in classes for, for more for safety than anything else, so.
I don't think I saw a reduction in phys ed times.
That would be, that would be in the special ed GLP teachers.
It's on one of these, one of those.
It's on the, the, the one we just did. That, that will happen. And we've also had an increase in physical education over the course of the last ten years of special ed staff.
Do we do a half of FTEs, or?
Well, the half, the half of FTE, we had to add a half, half of FTE to meet it, and that's how we moved Marissa into the, back into physical education, because we were, we were short at the P E spot, so we were, we were going to have to hire somebody, and we moved, instead of hiring, we moved Marissa back into there, we will, it looks like we'll be reducing, you know, at least some time from the, at least the GLP position.
So then she built in here as a, as how she built in her full-time cost for?
She's.
For phys ed?
The half of that half athletics.
And the P E portion, she split both at the high school and GLP.
So athletic, where would that fall down in the lineup, the budget lineup, to, to reduce that half?
To reduce the half, it would be under instructional, should be included in instructional half, or somebody included in instructional half, or whatever the athletic program.
So the athletic director should have gone down by half, because it was a full last year.
Correct, it was budgeted there for full, we just moved it, we changed the budget lineup, at least to let them know that I didn't change, we moved her back into GLP, we could change if we called, we called it, but that's what she is now.
So the plan for her for next year is halftime?
Doing the same thing, halftime athletics, halftime P E.
So then there's.
It looks like those numbers are, it looks like those numbers may be increasing, so they're going to be in the section, so. In P E.
Looking at smaller sections for, for classes with less than fifteen, that's where two FTEs, are those two FTEs easily extracted, if you will?
That would be, ultimately, that would be where we were talking about in the, the numbers today for high school, that we do one, we're reducing, you know, could we just four or five people, like, some, some portion to come up with one, one FTE equivalent, here would be, would be more.
Think about that, and see what, see how much percent.
Even with that, even with the one FTE that's in the, the packet for today, those areas will, those areas, that would probably come from the areas of, talking about the graphic areas of business, tech ed, family consumer science.
That's the next one, you're listening, four FTEs, I'm there, but one, you listen here, we're speaking things like AP classes and athletics, right?
Right, we, and we, and we would, AP classes are, are, numbers are pretty high, so we would be looking at other, other electives that are, that are lower, could be social studies electives, science electives, we would fill in that, in that piece in the first area, and then the second one is tech ed and business, family consumer science, reducing that to just, the requirement there is just in grade seven to eight.
Right, so it's the X box, we have four FTEs, it's true.
Correct.
You still do two, not touching that, business tech ed and family consumer science, you have a possibility of one, you set up.
Right, but they may, they may touch, they may touch business and tech ed, the ones at the top, for example, again, the one that was included today would most likely impact elective programs, and keeping in mind, with the exception of the seventh and eighth year program, business and tech ed are elective, elective programs, the vast majority of them, that program is elective.
How was, um, how was our psychologist, how are those services in most of those, are they assigned specifically to?
They're over, they're overlapping right now because they're having abundance, abundance of workers, they're, they're, they're really buried in a number of, they're, they're, they're the ones that are working directly with their classified kids and their populations increasingly.
Right, and I know that every, I think it's every three years or four years, they're, that those students get reevaluated, but I know that that's a one-time, that's a one-time activity that happens to students?
They're, they're heavily engaged with all of, all of those, all of those kids, my understanding from, from Sean is that you could use more in those areas as opposed to decreasing.
So how, how then does the social worker, what does the social worker do, it's like, how is that, how are those?
Social worker, social worker is working both, also with some, some of the special ed kids in, in the counseling piece of, of the IEP, as well as dealing with many of the other issues that, that students have, families have each and every day, so, again, that, that position in the district, as opposed to being point six, really could be full-time, and we would keep her more than busy.
Any more questions on the white section?
Okay.
The, the last thing, the bus transportation radius, what if it were changed to one mile as opposed to one point five, would there be, is there anything change in the savings?
We'd have to go back and, and look at it, one point five is just having to be the state.
Not allowable pupil mile?
Yeah.
We don't get aid as soon as we transport.
That's the state, that's the state requirement, is, so we, right now, we're busing everyone, so by law, we only have to bus those that are a mile and a half or more at, at high school level, that was why that number was charged, so I mean, I don't know that there would be a significant difference.
And, uh, there's conversation Saturday about a scenario where people, where students would have to walk to a central location, and we're looking at savings in general.
We're looking at that in regards to how we route our buses and getting there, we're doing, we're doing a lot of it and continue to start, we're doing more of it, the problem that we run into is there are, there are laws in place that don't allow us to do it in areas, in many areas that, that don't have sidewalks, for example, you have to look at, you have to look at it, and there's different parameters that come about without the sidewalks, and a lot of our neighborhoods don't have that, so we have to look at, at where we're, where we're going, for example, I use Jennings as an example, all along, there is, there are, there is no, there are no sidewalks, sidewalks up there, so to get them all to walk to one spot on Jennings, we can't do, even in.
Yeah, it would make sense in rural areas, but certainly in the central, in a more village area.
Right, and, and we're doing, and we're doing a lot, we're doing a lot of that along sixty-two, for example, asking them to walk out, to do, to do that, but even in some of our developments, there's no sidewalk ranges, so, we're trying to work within that and work within the laws and the guidelines to get us, and that's, and that's one of the areas that help us reduce some routes, before we were just, before we were just doing, just doing more pickups for everybody, and we're doing less of that, more group pickups. Before we were just, before we were just doing just door-to-door pickups for everybody and we're doing less of that, more open pickups.
Okay, um, done with that list. All right, so right now, kind of like roughly where we're at is take scenario two, add back trainer, ISB, legal. That puts us at a two hundred twenty-eight, seven savings, we'll standard gas at twenty-five thousand, which is a two fifty-three, eighty-seven.
Fourteen, four sixty-seven, so you're protecting the shares.
And...
Twenty-five thousand reduction in gas.
Right.
And I've been asking to update the number on the article in BOSI's overall list to data release.
Yep, BOSI's overall list, because I don't, I don't think that makes sense. We'll take the lower, lower...
No, I think that just was...
Probably okay.
Probably people who resist and stand up. Okay. All right, let's see, get us a real number on that one. Um, if we add that up, if my numbers are roughly right, we add that plus the increase of state aid, so versus budget three, it's four hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars better than budget three. Four hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars versus budget three, if I get that right. So questions we wanna...
Well, that was, yeah, the goal was to do the correct...
What I'd like to do, um, to figure this, not quite where I'd like to be close, but third thing I'd like to do is I'd like to add back some money. I'd like to add back about fifty thousand in supplies.
Classroom?
Classroom.
Classroom supply.
It's one of the things that are pretty clearly is our classroom supplies, I don't know, four fifty thousand goes, but it's better than nothing.
Better than nothing.
So we can do that, like this is the four forty-five, one eighty-one. A couple of things that, still looking at BOSI's, a color...
Again, I, you know, um, outside of the, outside of the list I gave you of the possible reductions, um, I would say, you know, making a hard relation, if you're gonna look at any clerical at all, that's a minimal amount, um, we're looking at today's material that's eleven thousand dollars across the board. I, you know, again, it was on, it was, it was reducing, it was reducing some, some time and some hours, I mean, I mean, reducing, uh, everyone.
It's the eleven eighty-two.
It's eleven, yeah. So I would, you know, again, I, I would suggest as opposed to going with, um, any, any additional clerical for this year that we, maybe as we move down the road, we may be able to pair that with more, but if you wanna reduce clerical, then you look at that eleven thousand dollar number.
All right, let's, let's do that and then, I still want to look at our number is...
Yeah, that's it, we'll look at it.
Eleven eighty-two.
The other thing I'd like to do is, I still like to go through, would you incorporate these numbers, give us a draft back? I'd like to go through all the line items just myself, I don't know if anybody else wants to, just make sure everything else feels about right given historical numbers. I haven't, I haven't done that yet.
This will essentially be version number four.
We can, we can put, we can put together draft four and we'll put it, why don't we put it out with, uh, with the packet for, uh, for the seventeenth and you'll have it, you'll have it this week, you'll have it on Thursday this week, if those are right.
We'll take a look at it, we need to schedule a meeting for the seventeenth, it's approved on the twentieth, right?
Right, so I mean, but if we wanna, if you wanna go through it and if you wanna take, we can go through it individually, certainly you can give us a call if you have questions. And if everybody feels comfortable with it or if there's, there's minimal change, that you're looking at a total number, you might be able to act on it on the seventeenth.
That's the lineup, yeah, all right, add up what we've looked at here.
And we'll plug that all into, into draft four and if you have questions, um, we're on break, but at least I'll be in and out next week. Just a couple of phone calls and we'll ask, we'll answer whatever specific questions about any one of those lines that seem to be...
So you'll give us a, a new draft for...
A total draft four, that's what we'll get.
And a list of the structural changes, kinda like you did, the colored sections that were pretty good for me.
Yeah, you put a new color out there for draft four and the changes.
We'll do.
That would work out good.
Thank you so much. Yes, we'll, we'll do that, we'll put that, we'll put that sheet again, just add another color to it, so you can look at them, where we're at it, where we're at it and subtract it. Um, as you're looking at it, do we, do you want to tonight take any, any look at any of the other additional revenue sources? I know we've heard a little bit about some of them, or at least one of them, I think, on Saturday in regards to use of facilities.
Yeah, I mean, I would like, I mean, granted, I think the projections of the facility cost fifty K, that facility uses cost fifty K, it's a place that would be a bit high. You know, I know other school districts are charging an awful fee, uh, facilities.
I think the proposal that I gave you, Mike, is there in terms of how much to charge.
Who are the primary users of the facilities right now, what would you say?
Dolphin, Dolphins, Town Rec, Eden Valley Ball Club, Boys and Girls Club, and the Town.
I mean, it's fifty thousand, the potential revenue listed here, but then again, if you start charging for services, then some people might not pay. You know, I, I think we see some, I think you provided some of the proposals for other school districts.
Right.
Then charge a fee, um, an awful fee.
Right.
I wouldn't oppose to, to looking at that and, uh...
I mean, we just, actually, when, when we did it, we just took, uh, we took the lower, lower end of everybody's, uh, P schedule that was out there.
My concern would be, I can't speak to the other organizations, but the Boys and Girls Club is a non-for-profit and, um, they're just barely scraping by. It's been very difficult times for non-for-profits. And if we were gonna do this, I would possibly wanna make a distinction between non-for-profits and other organizations.
Right, I guess you have to look at, you know, whether, what you're gonna do with the town, Dolphins, those are all the same.
I think also, I think you'll see most of them are non-for-profit.
Well, five oh one C three is what I mean, actually, illegal, non-for-profit.
And keep in mind, if we ever go to contention budget, we will get the charge.
Uh, half this was accounted for, I can't remember.
At some, at some, at some point, whether it's their parent organization or themselves.
Under this price and structure, it costs, it costs about fourteen thousand dollars.
That was about nine...
The Dolphins, twenty thousand dollars. Now, is there a way to distinguish between the ones that actually are costing three versus ones that are top, for example, if you're hard to keep, still those staff or coming on weekend or things like that?
Well, some of those, some of those we already, we already charge, for example, the Dolphins has a large swim meet and we have to keep a custodian here. They're responsible for taking care of the custodian, for example, if it happens on a, on a Sunday and they're required to have a custodian here, then they're required to pay for that.
You wanna think about that once more?
We can bet on that.
I just don't think there's projections that you list there or buy.
Right. Well, and again, I mean, I think they have, you know, you have to make a decision whether you are, you know, you are, you aren't, you know. I don't think those other school districts even differentiate, but I would agree with Colin in regards to, you know, um, the needs of the, the non-for-profits. And we've been, um, very strong over the course of the last five years of talking about the fact that these are, um, community-owned buildings and that the community should be here using them. That kinda defeats that, uh, philosophy if you start charging for the use of them.
Well, it's not additional cost, so you're saying everything on that list is not additional cost.
Isn't that, you're just using for the, the space for, when, there's always additional cost in regards to lights and that kind of stuff, but, you know, in the general, general plan of the most kind of...
Well, that's the one I brought up about, if you have that, some of it, the lights might come on, but the heat sort of, for most parts, they're already, but if you have to keep staff over or something like that, that's the ones that's kinda...
They're already, we're already charging them.
We are, okay, so for most part, that's, that's all, that's all fixed cost.
Correct.
A little bit of details.
Anyway, and again, if you, you know, you may wanna think about considering, um, a little bit more within that text camp to maybe offset, continuing to do it and keep it open for the public. Rational, if you will, from doing that, if you go as, as opposed to just then write it two and you go to, you write up two point four, because if you go to two point nine four, um, you know, it might be, um, you might be able to do that in anticipation of those uncovered, that those fixed costs, right, a little bit of extra income.
All right, anything else? Anything else you else can do, think about?
I think so, I think we're okay, we'll get it, we'll get it all out, we'll have it, I just, I gotta ask, you know, even if you, uh, call and just leave us a message or call, um, my cell phone, we'll, we'll get back to you, um, as we, as we are at break, so we can, if you have questions, as you, as you get it, again, everything for, everything for the seventeenth will be posted on Thursday of this week. Um, so you'll have everything for the meeting, so if ultimately you wanna review that budget, you don't have anything else to do on Easter Sunday, uh, and you wanna, um, give us a call and ask, ask us questions, might expedite some of the stuff for, for Monday or Tuesday.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most motion to adjourn. All right, everyone.